Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Good morning. I would like to call to order this open session of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Saturday, August 5th, 2023. It is now nine o'clock, and I would ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We'll begin with the business portion of this meeting. We have a request for an amendment to a special one-day wine and malt liquor license, Luke Voss, Crooked Coast, Coastfest, Banshell, Marina Park, Saturday, 8/5/23. Mr. Renshaw?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. A couple of weeks ago, I was contacted by the police departments who had gone out and taken a look at a amended plan, security plan, for this event. As the chairman mentioned, they currently have a license, entertainment and one-day liquor license. They're asking for a modification to allow, the original license that was issued by Select Board basically contained the beer and wine within a specific area, gated off area. The applicant is requesting that the entire venue be considered the gates and open up the sales that way. They've got, according to the police department, they've got more than adequate security. They've added additional security to the setup. PD again has examined the security plan, and they're confident that it's more than adequate, and they have no objections.
And we do have someone here representing this request. Does the board have any questions of Mr. Voss?
I have one.
Mr. Voss, would you come to the podium, please?
Mr. Voss, all the servers are all tip certified and all of that, correct?
That's correct.
So they're aware of the, you know, how to deal with underage requests and all of that?
Yes, they are.
And they're fully staffed with that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I have a comment if I could.
Mr. Brown?
Just that this setup seems very similar to concerts that have been held there in the past for Dance for Badges, Reunion of Summer's Past, and other events. So it seems reasonable to me.
Mr. Muscally?
Just a comment. I heard from a number of people who attended last year who felt that the way it had been set up last year was problematic and, in fact, it was, made it difficult for the patrons to be able to enjoy themselves because they were in a confined area. So I certainly agree with the police department that this is a good plan.
Any other comments or questions? My only concern is the amendment coming in the day of the event. So, and I make that comment just so next year we can be more on top of that. And that is my only request. So I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Muscally's motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Voss.
Luck. Okay, we will move on from the business section of this meeting, and we will go into our strategic planning workshop. This is a workshop, and I will entertain no public comment at this meeting. Okay, so as all the board members are aware, we do a strategic planning workshop every year. We approved this, the most recent plan, in October of '22. And so the plan is not that old. But we had talked as a board about taking a look at our plan more than once a year. I'm not necessarily looking for a huge overhaul of the plan, but I do think we need to look at our priorities and get some kind of update as to how we're doing and if there are any changes that the board sees are appropriate at this time. You all received a copy of your strategic plan, so I would like to start taking a look at our priorities to see if there are any adjustments that the board would like to see happen. And I'm more than willing to start with an adjustment, if that's okay. And it kind of came out of, and we've had this conversation a little bit before, and I think, Mr. Brown, you've been very public and open about this situation, and it's about the Falmouth Police Department. I was there yesterday, and I met with the chief of police. It was simply to, I hadn't had a one-on-one with him. I scheduled it, and he took me on a tour. And I will tell you that, from my perspective, the condition of that building is disgraceful. We've done a lot of work around other public buildings, and we've spent a lot of good time, a lot of good effort on other buildings, and it is time to take a look at that building. And I know publicly you have said, Mr. Brown, that it is about a new building and not necessarily throwing good money after bad. I'm not quoting you exactly, but that's what I've heard you say. So moving forward in our strategic plan, and it's only my perspective, and I bring it to the board, the, looking at that police department and a new, potentially a new building needs to be one of our top priorities, and it needs to be reflected in this plan. Because sort of historically, when it isn't, we have conversations and nothing happens. So, and I know Mr. Renshaw, Mr. Johnson Staub, Chief Lori are all looking at it as well. It's just my sense that if it is not a priority of this board, and we don't get behind this, sometimes things lag. So I have real, real issues with that building, and disgraceful is not an exaggeration. So I started to think about history, and I know that there was, I think it was 1.6 or 1.8 million dollars set aside. I think it was in 2021. I think it became a perfect storm with COVID and some changes that happened that the money stalled. I personally would love to see a feasibility study, and I would like in November to appoint a building committee to start really taking a look, boots on the ground, and start moving this thing forward. So that's sort of my suggestion to the board.
Full disclosure, when the chair came out of that meeting, I got a call from her saying, "You spent a lot of time there." Did you, have you seen everything that's going on there? And I said, "I have." And she said, "I'm serious. This place is disgraceful." So I put a call in to Senator Moran immediately. And thankfully, and with appreciation, she said, "I'm all in with this. I'll help you guys whatever way we can do this. We'll get with the town manager. We'll set up, try to get some more funding and all of that." She said she's helped other towns in our community, and Falmouth hasn't received any money from them before. So we're going to try to push that. But I just want to publicly thank her for responding, number one. She's one of the only people that answer the phone on the first ring. So for that, and then I'm going to follow up with your permission or the board's permission with her and try to set something up. So...
And I don't think you get money if you don't ask. And so that's one of the things we need to be on top of. And I just would not like to see this sort of fall, and I know it won't, because I know that both Chief Lori, Mr. Renshaw, and Mr. Johnson Staub understand, you know, what's going on in terms of the building and how it's falling apart. So, Mr. Brown, if you have any history to add to this, I'd love to hear it.
Well, just, I know some history about the building itself, and it's got a flat roof that's been problematic for a long time. There's a lot of moisture damage hidden within the walls. It's an old building, and I would also like to consider relocation of the physical location of the police department. I would think maybe something a little off Main Street, a little more centrally located. If you notice in Barnstable, their police department is located in an area outside the main part of town. I'm sure that's helpful to them coming and going and getting around. So I would think we would look at something, I don't know if it would be closer to the high school, but up Gifford Street maybe, or somewhere out that way.
Would a feasibility study include that?
Yes, Madam Chair. I appreciate Select Board member Brown's comments, because we are, Peter and I, Chief Lori, we're actually looking at some alternate sites. This is future planning. So that's on our radar, and that's happened over the past, maybe, what, three, four weeks we've been looking at that. The building, I don't think the bones, I'm not a structural engineer, but the bones of that building I don't think are good. So I think ultimately, we're going to have to look at another location and a new building construction. And we're going to work towards that, and I've got some additional details I'll share. You know, there's some immediate needs, not wanting to put money into a building that we know we're going to replace within the next four or five years, but there's some immediate needs. The windows, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. Greg Endicott with Facilities was in that meeting. We're already starting that kind of evaluation and review. I believe the roof was in decent, adequate condition, according to Greg. The windows are a huge issue. When it rains sideways, you get a lot of water intrusion into the building, and when you walk in, that's the odor, I think. It's just the kind of...
Would that lead to the mold issue?
It could potentially. So we're going to, there'd been some air sampling done in the past, and I think we're going to do another round of that. We want to make sure the building is safe, obviously. So we're going to do another round of that. But, so the windows need to be looked at, evaluated, replaced. Something needs to be done. The pointing, you know, the bricks and mortar, that needs to be looked at as well, because there's huge sections on the outside wall that have busted out, broken out the pointing. So that needs to be fixed, sealed somehow, to prevent that water intrusion, because that's what's getting into the walls, I believe. So we're looking at that. We're going to get some quotes, and I believe our plan is to take that to November, trying to get some funding assigned. As Chairman mentioned, I think there's 1.4 million dollars that was appropriated towards a renovation of the police department. We're looking to request a reappropriation of that, a portion of those funds, to help offset some of these costs. That was the plan.
Can we still move forward with the reconfiguration? Because the officers, the sergeant's room is like a kid's classroom. I mean, they're jammed in, little tiny desks pushed together. I think they need some better working conditions.
Chief Lori, just recently, within the past week, I believe, mentioned that he's looking at trying to do some reorganization, some space needs, kind of an assessment and reorganize some of the office area.
Sure would be nice.
Make it more effective.
If there was a building in town that we could retrofit and pour that money into, you know what I'm saying, a good structure somewhere, because it's going to be hard to retrofit that police station while they're trying to work out of there. It's almost undoable because where do you, almost everybody else you could put somewhere else, but because with the booking room, with cells, with all of that, and their comms and all of that, it's hard to do that kind of work and then maintain, especially being as short-staffed as they are. It'd be hard to do it. So...
It will be. We're talking about, Chief Lori has mentioned, he's got some experience using, whether this is part of the renovation or using trailers, kind of the mobile modular kind of setup. So that would probably address some of that need. And then just staging it, taking it down in phases and coordinating those phases. Again, trying to seal the building to prevent more water intrusion. I think that's like step one, and we really need to do that because it's just going to get worse.
And not to disagree with his premise on it, you know, if you're renting stuff, you're paying somebody else money that you could be putting into your project, you know? That's why I was curious if there were any other structures in Falmouth that we could retrofit.
We'll take a look.
Do we have architect plans? I believe we do. Didn't we have a local architect? Do we have plans?
We have plans for an interior, you know, changing how things are set up within the structure. And so that we have 1.4 million dollars approved to carry out that plan. It is Chief Lori's position, and I think Mike and I are in agreement that that's probably not the best use of our funds, because we're looking at, we need to look at a new facility, whether it's in the same location or in a different location. So then the question becomes, you know, we want to take care of health and safety because we're not going to get a new facility in six months. It's probably closer to four or five years. So let's take care of the, you know, the moisture issue, health and safety, to make the existing facility usable. And, you know, I think Mike has expressed as much as we know about where we think that's going, but we believe we need to do a feasibility study to really look at that more closely and analyze, okay, what are the, you know, what are the whole phases here? What do we need to do short-term to make this building usable? And then the long-term feasibility study is, okay, can we, is there a way to, you know, to renovate the existing building? The, you know, the thinking at this point is probably not, but I think that should be looked at more closely to sort of prove that out. And then we want to look at, is it feasible to tear down and replace on the existing site? Very challenging. Again, probably not, but we want to look at that option. And then, thirdly, can we find a new location where we could put a new police station?
So, does that mean reallocating that money?
Yeah, so we have 1.4 million appropriated, and the article's written fairly broadly for improvements to the police station. So, you know, legally, I think we're fine if we wanted to do window replacements with that 1.4 million dollars. I'm just, you know, I think it's a judgment call that we want to make because it's different from the narrative that we gave to the public leading up to it, that this was just a reconfiguration, reusing the existing space. We didn't really talk about exterior, you know, related building envelope type improvements. So it's a change in plan. We might want to think about reappropriating that in November, just, you know, for transparency's sake.
And would we have, would the feasibility study be done by then? Would we have a plan with real numbers to replace windows? The rugs, the flooring, I think, absolutely needs to go. I mean, you can see it, you can feel it, you can smell it. I can't believe that that's healthy.
What was Greg's timeline, do you recall? Greg Endicott, Facilities, we were talking about trying to develop the timeline and raise some of the projected costs back. I don't know if it's going to meet that.
I think Greg could work up some concept-level pricing, but in terms of a feasibility study, actually, that's one of the things I think we need to reappropriate funds for.
Perfect. Perfect.
Would it be appropriate, Madam Chair, to do a PowerPoint at-town meeting to show, because you're not going to get anybody to go in there and do tours to see exactly, if you walk into the showers or you walk into any of the rudimentary spaces are poor over there and antiquated. I think some kind of PowerPoint to really dial in on the issues. People say, "Oh, sure. You know, we got a fire station now. We want a new police station." Anybody, I would challenge anybody to walk through that building and not agree with the premise that that thing is far gone. And I think that it would help to clear up the money issue of whether we need it or we don't. I think it's clear that we need something different. And the challenges with logistics and all of that while operating a fully-staffed police department, I think it makes it impossible to do both at the same time, to try to, you know what I mean? I know we need to clean it up right now, but it just is, it's 1940.
Madam Chair, we certainly, we're talking about a video, but we certainly do a PowerPoint with some slides to kind of show the conditions that, make sure it does.
And, I mean, you've been banging on this for a while now. I mean, this has been one of your pet peeves for a while.
To build a new station's going to take a while, and I don't think a feasibility study would be ready by November. I don't see how that would be possible.
And to Peter Johnson Staub's point, we have to reallocate the money to do it to begin with. So that is what will happen in November.
Or we should, anyway.
I agree.
I agree.
Mr. Muscally?
At the same time, I think we would maybe look to see, well, what might go there if we do go to another location, and what we might be able to put there. I mean, maybe housing, I don't know. But, you know, I think a parallel track, if we're going in that direction, might be to think about what we may be able to do with the space once it goes someplace. Because I agree, you know, it's a choke point. You've got the, you know, Cape Cod baseball at times. You've got the senior center. It's just, it's a busy place.
Isn't the senior center out of room already?
I don't know.
Couldn't they do their overflow or some of their systems next door?
You could put a playground again, like we had before. I mean, there's a lot of things you could do to relieve the traffic at the site. It'd probably be helpful, even if you don't put a new facility there. Maybe housing might be good.
You're still going to have that water issue, I think, because when it, one of the things that I was sort of blown away by was when it rains, it rains sideways, and it goes into their garage where they bring people in, and they have to open the doors, and it rushes out. So water is going to be an issue, if anything, that goes there.
Yeah, the building, the whole configuration of the building, I think the building should just go eventually. But for now, we fix the health and safety issues, make it a workable space, because right now, it's kind of depressing in there. And that roof leaked a long time, and maybe okay now, but the year after year of trying to find the leaks and figure out what was going on, I mean, I'm sure that's really put some permanent long-term damage in the balls of that building.
He's right. That certainly would help with recruitment, too. And we've been both very busy. We've been invited to the Rochester, the new Rochester Police Department, but you and I have been out straight. And what a difference in how happy they are to be working there and their facility.
Get born. Just go over the bridge to born.
Right, right.
Did you have something else, Mr. Muscally?
Well, I was going to echo the same thing, that I think it would be a good statement to the department and to the staff that, you know, the board supports a better working environment for them. So I'm in full support of that.
I think we've really done a good job of getting the fire department in order and the staffing levels and the buildings, and, you know, we've got a plan in place for that. And I think it's really time that we focus on getting the police department up to... I agree.
Absolutely. And we use the same equation. We have a building committee. We move it forward. And I would like to see it reflected in our strategic plan under health and public safety, and it to be very succinct about what the concrete steps are moving forward.
And the other thing, if we want to stay on public safety for now, I would like to reestablish the community policing initiative that we had in years past, where we integrate village associations with designated police officers for each neighborhood. It's, you know, hopefully, it's the neighborhood that they live in. It makes it easier for them to attend the village meetings. We've been so short-staffed that we've kind of let that go. And, you know, our village association meeting this coming 17th of August, we're going to be having, I think Chief Lori's going to be able to attend if he gets out of his earlier meeting in time. Captain Reed's going to go, just in case Chief Lori gets delayed, and Sheriff Buckley's coming, and the district attorney's going to come, just to give us an understanding of how it all works. Because the police are the first ones to intercept the criminals and deal with whatever's going on, and then the district attorney has to determine whether or not they go to jail. And if they do, Sheriff Buckley has to find a way to reincorporate them back into the society. But I think there's a role for village associations to communicate with police, because there might be people that understand and see a young person or whoever is in trouble and struggling, and try to intervene before things get out of hand.
Does that specific request come from the board, or does it come from Chief Lori? Do we, I'm just trying to think of how we frame that in the strategic plan. Consider reestablishing, I'm thinking of the wording, because it's, I don't want to be too directive of what he does.
It would be encourage, maybe?
Encourage or consider? Okay. I want to be careful about language.
Because you don't want to over, you don't want to over...
Micromanage, right?
Right.
Well, and you don't want the public to get the perception that they are now becoming part of the policing.
What they do.
The actual policing, which adds liability to and danger to their own well-being.
So I think, I think it's, I think it's a concept, and I think it's a great idea overall. I just feel like it's a concept that we could include, but that it would really have to come from the chief as to what that's...
Certainly.
I had a comment, too, if you'll allow me to.
Please.
So, I'm looking at the plan kind of comprehensively, trying to, and we have a piece of, one of the priority areas that the board selected was organizational effectiveness and community engagement. We tied those together last year. So I guess my question is, we can certainly put that as a goal in the health and public safety strategic priority area. I was just thinking, perhaps, because it is an engagement piece, would that not be better under that community engagement?
Maybe.
Public safety related. I'm trying to, and I've got a, there's a method to what I'm, again, looking at the plan comprehensively, holistically, making sure that we kind of align these goals and actionable goals and objectives with the kind of the bones and the framework of the plan that we have right now, with the seven key strategic priority areas. So that was just a suggestion, so we keep that straight. Because there's going to be other community engagement pieces that are going to be recommended as well.
Yeah, so I agree with that.
I would go with that. I would go with that recommendation. Mr. Muscally?
Yeah, I don't know if we're talking about community engagement, but I think that a place maybe on the town website that would link to contact information for the various, you know, village associations, which I don't think there is. I've been trying to find a good way to get in touch with the T-Ticket organization, which is where I live, but I, you know, Googled them. I couldn't really find anything current. So I think if there was maybe a link to the various associations, the West Falmouth Association, you know, East Falmouth T-Ticket, all of, you know, Maravista, you know, Maravista, that hides. So I think that would be helpful for the community.
We did, at one time, compile a list of association presidents, but unfortunately, as leadership changes in those groups, the contact list falls away, and it's a job to keep it updated. So that list kind of came and went, and I guarantee you that it's no longer useful, because all the emails are different, and it's hard to find them, like you said. It would be a good idea to keep track of it, though, and try to encourage those village associations to come forward and update their own information.
And send their information to us.
But a lot of those people are elders, too, and they're getting older and doing, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and things change.
Sometimes associations fall off, you know, and if a leader gets too old or retires, goes to Florida, and nobody steps up, sometimes an association is out, you know, not even in service.
And I was going to say, some of them are far more active than other associations.
When we researched the East Falmouth Village in 2003, it hadn't been active for years.
Interesting. Okay, so let's start going through the plan, if we could. Affordable housing. Any questions, comments, suggestions?
I have one question about the first part of it, if I could. It's mentioned in here that we need to produce 100 units, not to include subsidized housing inventory. I don't understand what that means to not, specifically not include that.
If I recall, it's because if a set of units has 25% affordable, all of the units in that development are considered on the SHI.
If it's a rental.
If it's a rental, right. So if we actually want 100 affordable units, we can't count all the ones that are on the SHI because they're not all affordable.
I think that, yeah. So maybe we just could clarify the language a little. I found it a little bit confusing the way it's written there.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Muscally?
If we're clarifying language, you know, I think there would be emphasis on the word affordable is not necessarily where we should be. I think we should be, you know, on a broader concept of housing and not, you know, I think we all know what we're talking about and what it means, but I think it gives the wrong message to the public. It's not just affordable housing that we're committed to, but whatever we call it, workforce housing, attainable housing, achievable housing. I just think using the term affordable, at least as the overall priority, you know, I would like to see maybe some words that might encompass all of the housing needs that we have. I don't know what that word is. We're striving to find that all-encompassing word.
I know. It's troubling.
Saying affordable at the top as a priority.
It's just...
So we just take affordable out and say housing?
I mean, I, yes, you know, however we, inclusive, however we go, but that's fine.
And I think we just say housing. We keep it really broad. And I think we just say housing, we keep it really broad, but I, I do think that add the, to your point, Mr. Brown, add a hundred affordable rental units, I think this language is really, really important and I think it's important because we don't want to get that confusion around if twenty-five percent of the rentals are affordable, they all count, but that confuses people, so I think the, from my perspective, I think that language is really, really clear and maybe it's because we understand it better, but this is for us to work off of.
Okay, maybe we just say these units do not necessarily need to be included on the SHI, or just something because it said not to include and it just threw me off there when I was reading it this morning.
Madam Chair, I, I think we can, we can make the point that I think I agree we need to make, but maybe just a little bit more explanation so someone reading it would, would understand where it comes from and how, how it does, you know, interact with the, with the larger list, we want a hundred, one hundred affordable apartments and, and we don't want to count necessarily towards that goal, these other apartments, I think just a little bit more explanation, but I agree, we should keep the concept, just maybe, just a little more clarification on the parent.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I could real quickly, so I, I want to make a comment as I'm, as I'm listening, fantastic plan, in the past when I've done these strategic planning projects, I think it's really important that at some point, and I think that point is coming very soon, I would recommend that we involve the committees, boards and especially the departments, the staff and kind of coming up with, the board sets the policy, obviously, but it's by my experience it works really well and you engage the departments when you get them involved in defining and, and coming up with what I call objectives, I think here we call it actionable goals, I think that was the intent, that the measurable pieces of the, of the, of the policy, so I think it's important to involve the departments in coming up with those definitions too because ultimately, I'm gonna be held accountable for making sure that we're making progress towards this plan, so I want to make sure the departments and the staff and the boards and committees are comfortable where as well.
Well, it directly, from my perspective, addresses the disconnect between the plan and people who are expected to carry out the goals of the select board.
Well, that's been my, that's been an observation.
So I think that that's a, a great idea and I think that it would make this plan something that was livable and attainable and, and everybody buys in if we include more people.
Intrackable.
Exactly, so we kind of do the thirty thousand foot view and then we bring the people who are actually doing it in for input, I think that's a great idea.
Thank you, and I'm not suggesting we, we, we take this down and change, radically change it, what I'm suggesting is I go back and Peter and I work with the department heads, the boards and committees to kind of refine, and again, for a, for an objective to be measured so that we can measure the progress, I'll get into that a little bit later, it has to be very specific and objective so that we can literally measure our progress throughout, you know, each quarter, every, every three-month period and then ultimately at the end of the year, we can demonstrate to the select board or on a quarterly basis kind of where we're, where we're at, and I'll give you a, for instance, in the specific objective or actionable goal of adding a hundred or more affordable rental units, so, so I'm assuming, you know, we have a five-year plan, strategic plan, and maybe I shouldn't assume this, so the way I would break this down, and we can talk about refining the language than not to include and making that more clear, to measure this, this actionable goal or objective, it's gonna be important that we look at, so, so is it twenty units per year, five per quarter, I think that's, that's the simple math, right, so, so we have this broad statement, select board is directing staff, departments, boards, committees to create, add a hundred more affordable rental units, so what I'm gonna go back and do is kind of put a plan together and a tool to, a dashboard to kind of show how we're, how we're progressing on that, so twenty per year, five per quarter is gonna be that kind of target that we set for ourselves, but that's the kind of detail that I think needs to be within these actionable goals or what I'll call objectives.
It'll help the public to understand it as well because I don't think they still do.
Well, and it's gonna help, I think, the staff and this is, this is already a concrete because it has, it has that add one hundred, so that's, that's pretty concrete, but some of the others, we go through the plan, some of the other, the other six areas, priority areas, they're, they're less subjective, a little, little bit more subjective and it's hard to kind of tell the staff, this is what we want you to focus on and do unless they can really have a very concrete in-the-box kind of.
That's true, we've been a little too broad sometimes, hoping not to be too confining, but I think more direction would be better.
I'm gonna agree and disagree, I think the board is to stay at the thirty thousand foot view, I think, I think you're working with the department heads, they come back and they come up with their plan to meet that goal and here's how they're gonna do it, for them, what they're saying is they're gonna do, they're, they're gonna strive to do twenty per quarter or whatever, I don't know that I would push that down on them, I think it's great if it comes up from them to make this plan work, so I see it a little bit differently.
If I recall, we were first working on this, we did say that we wanted SMART goals, specific, measurable and so on, but then when we got to actually putting the plan together, we decided that that is like, as you said, the part that the departments are gonna have to work on is tell us what the specific thing is.
Yes.
So I think, I can send you some really old drafts when we first started pulling this together, some thoughts that we had.
So that, that way, but we achieve two things, we let them know what the board's priority is and they come up with the action plan, how that's gonna happen.
Yeah, the milestones, the objectives underneath the goals, right, because the way I see it, you know, key priority areas, that's the policy, that's the things the board wants us to focus, and you, you know, have a draft set of goals, but then we come up, the staff comes up working with Peter and I with the, with the objectives, right, the really measurable, in the weeds, very detailed information.
I put it on my to-do list, I'll send it to you on Monday.
Thank you.
Like it.
I have a, an action item I'd like to add, if we could, to the housing line, which would be to consider a real estate transfer fee for funding affordable housing and also supporting the residential deed restriction, which is not necessarily affordable, but it ensures that a house stays residential, if you think that those action items could be added to the list, I would like to suggest those.
As considerations.
Yes.
The Affordable Housing Committee is working on the transfer fee thing, so I think if we have it in there, that's fine because they're already working on that.
Okay.
And maybe it's a consideration or, you know, to just put it on the radar somehow, not that we've completely decided, but you know what I mean, it's just.
I think we can put it as a consideration, sure.
And then, just a note, I don't think this really goes in the strategic plan, but just a note that the planning board has been running into some of the issues with the miss residential commercial overlay district where they don't have as much latitude to be the independent permit granting authority as they thought they would when they first initiated it, and so it's my understanding that they're gonna go back and, and do some revisions to that to give themselves more flexibility, maybe reduce the parking requirements and some other tweaks that might get, make it work better, because I think the Main Street project has been a good example of the limitations and the constrictions that they're under, so I'd just like us to just be aware of that.
How is that done, Doug?
They would have, they would have to revise it and bring it to town meeting for reapproval.
Right.
But, I mean, I, I support that, I hope the board supports that because it gives them more flexibility and then, the one other thing that I, I'd like to get a little bit more involved with the Falmouth Housing Authority, just to understand better if there's any way we can help them and supplement their efforts, I feel like they must have a lot of units that are out of service and, you know, vacant and I think that is a lot of affordable housing that we're missing out on, so if there's some way we can help them, I'd like to do it, I don't know if there is, I know they're more of a federal agency, but there must be something we can do to help them, you know, get these units online.
You know, I, I am a member of the Housing Authority and still am, I'm one of the commissioners and you're absolutely right, there are gaps in being able to get those apartments back rented when there are some, some problems, I think, I think for the most part the disconnect is with the state and how long the state takes in, in getting these projects done, but, you know, but, but certainly the article in the paper this, yesterday about the issues with the Housing Authority and the pulling of permits and so forth, so, I mean, to the ex, and I, you know, admittedly the Housing Authority was, was making some mistakes, I think unwittingly, but maybe there's a way to try and, you know, put them in a, in a, you know, better place with the town so that they don't run into these problems.
Yeah, maybe we could invite the director to a meeting and if we get a better picture of what's going on, we send a letter to our legislators and ask for some help.
Can we put that on, an agenda item for a select board meeting?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not sure that it belongs in our strategic plan.
I agree.
And I'm gonna try and keep this meeting tight because I'm taking your time on a Saturday, so I'd like to stick to the, the actual plan.
All right.
If I will, I would just echo what, what Doug said, I mean, if I had the chance before him, I would have mentioned the real estate transfer fee, you know, the deed restriction possibility, which I think in our report on the update, I think Kim mentioned some of the efforts that are being made with deed restrictions and, and, you know, that missing middle of, of housing and, you know, again, maybe someplace in there to emphasize, you know, the need to, to address all different types of housing and that middle, missing middle, what they, what they refer to.
Anything else on housing?
Nope.
Okay, we're gonna move on to energy and water conservation and sustainability. Any comments?
I would like to see us add solar panels at the wastewater treatment facility and tie into the old location where the wind turbines used to tie in, if we can take any advantage of that, just an action goal.
And again, that's really, really specific, so I would put that under a consideration.
Okay.
And I would not put it as a directive, does anybody agree, disagree?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
And then, another one that you may feel the same way is, I think maybe we should intervene with the AMP Energy Project to negotiate the power purchase agreement with the utility provider, because when we did that with the solar panel project at the dump, we got a, a new deal with the energy provider where our entire municipal electric bill is reduced by a percentage as part of that agreement, we don't have that with the schools, but if we take the initiative and the AMP Energy people are, are very amenable to not being the ones to negotiate that power purchase agreement, they'll do it if they have to, but they'd rather have the town do it if they, if we can, and if we do, we might get a deal, say, for the schools to get a reduced utility rate, it's just another potential action item, but maybe it's a board.
So let me, let me put this out there, I think those last two pieces should come under our sustainability coordinator to investigate.
Okay.
I don't think they should be here, I think they should be ideas that the town manager talks to the sustainability coordinator about, saying this is what the board talked about, these, these are two ideas that they'd really like to see you pursue and it goes there, because again, it's very specific and I think it would come under that position.
All right, I agree with that.
Madam Chair, we have, on that front, on the sustainability coordinator front, we have an update and I'll let Peter kind of explain where we're at in that process, he's kind of taking the lead on that.
Yeah, with Susan Lumpin, HR Director, and, and Mike, we have gone through two rounds of interviews and we're pleasantly surprised at the strength of the candidates and we're in reference check process, so hope to have an appointment within a couple of weeks.
Nice.
Excellent.
And it, so your, your suggestions are very timely.
Thank you.
They'll, they'll be good to report at town meeting too if that goes through.
Yeah, that needs to happen.
Be a nice, some nice news there.
Anything else on energy, water conservation and sustainability?
I'd still like to see a couple of things, but again, I don't know if they're really strategic plan items, but just, I'll mention them quickly, that I'd like to get a program to replace old wasteful toilets that are five gallons flush when we can do it with one point six, I'd like to, whether it's some sort of a tax rebate or actually we buy a fleet of toilets and just say, here you go, and you pay the plumber, because it's very inexpensive to change a toilet, you just take it out, put the new one in.
Is, is there any ordinance or anything around building new houses where you have to put in?
Oh, yeah.
I was gonna say, because.
And, and when you're remodeling, if you touch an old toilet, you have to replace it, it's part of the plumbing code.
Okay.
But if it's still flushing and working and you're in a hundred-year-old house, you're not gonna fix it because it's one more thing to pay for.
Right.
Unless somebody's giving you an incentive.
But so you're saying have a program to incentivize people?
To get rid of the last few that are still kicking around and, and also I'd like to see us create a program, different, different subject, but if you want to.
No, I was just gonna say, again, would that, where does that, who would be responsible or how, I'm trying to think about if, if you have this idea.
Energy, I'm thinking of energy and water conservation, so I'm.
Right, but who would be the sort of person, office?
It's not, I haven't thought it through completely, I just feel like we need to think of some way to do it and anybody that's got an idea, I'd love to hear it.
And I think that could, again, that could be an idea that we pass to the town manager, but I'm not sure it would, I don't know if it would go on this because it's so.
And there's gonna be enough of an incentive to make people want to do that.
Exactly, so just throwing it out there.
We're gonna figure that part out, what, you know, what's the advantageous aspect to that for them?
And another action item would be to incentivize irrigation wells in people's area, you know, in your backyard, the more irrigation wells we have, the less water we're using and then also we're taking that nitrogen-laden water, especially in the areas around the ponds and, and the waterways, I think that the more we pull out of the ground and put in our gardens, the better off we're gonna be and it'll help remediate sewer planning areas as well.
I agree.
Took quite a while to remediate Little Pond, it's getting better now, but the faster we pull that stuff out, quicker, and if there's some kind of incentive for that, again, I don't know if it really belongs in the strategic plan, but it's another.
Let me just go to Mr. Muscally.
Yeah, just as an overall, you know, I think with solar panels, I know there's a number of nonprofits that are looking at, you know, solar, solar panels as a possibility and maybe there's some kind of a, a partnership with, you know, with the town to take some of that excess, you know, you know, energy that's stored as a result of the, of the solar panels, maybe some kind of a interaction between the town and the nonprofits when they put in the solar panels and there may be some excess power that they're generating that maybe we can, they can work with the town, I've been approached by at least one nonprofit in town to, you know, see about exploring something like that and it's mentioned, you know, explore private public partnerships. The other thing, just one more thing, and I, I don't know much about the concept, but I've heard at least one resident talking about exclusion meters and I don't, I'm not, I don't know all there is about that, but, you know, maybe something along with, with what you're saying, in respect to irrigation and water and so.
Madam Chair, I can speak to that point if you like.
Go ahead.
So that's, this is an issue that was debated at town meeting a couple of times and it's about, there is a, an equity concern raised by folks who use town potable water to irrigate, their argument is that's not going into the sewer system, so for those who are on the sewer system, they shouldn't be charged a sewer fee for water that isn't going into the sewer system, the counterargument is that we don't, we, we want to actively discourage people from using potable water to irrigate their lawns, and this ties to a, a point I wanted to raise in this category, I learned just recently that we are approaching limits of our potable water system as we look at large new developments, the water superintendent has initiated a study to look at that capacity more closely, but I just wanted to put it on the radar that, you know, we've moved beyond water conservation as just sort of an, a general environmental concern, we actually, as we look to achieve our housing needs and we promote redevelopment, particularly of the downtown corridor, we're gonna need to start looking at water conservation as part of that and, and the exclusion meters again, you know, I think the equity argument is real, but I also think we want to look really hard at ma, at creating even more disincentives for people to use potable water to irrigate, like maybe a ban on new construction and maybe some other additional regulations.
One, one would think that as we decrease the percentage of potable water, we increase the nitrogen level because, because it won't dissipate in, in the amount of water, you know what I'm saying, so.
The toilets.
It, it gets more concentrated, the less percentage of potable water we have, that's how I, I think about it in my mind.
And we're wasting money pumping fresh water back and treating it because it's commingling with the dirty water, so, yeah, I mean, I think that's why that initiative didn't pass at town meeting, just the concept of wasting water, that you spent all this time and money and effort on cleaning it to put it on your lawn, it just doesn't make sense.
So, so my comment, this is a great, great discussion, so my comment is, this is an exciting area of your strategic priorities with the new sustainability coordinator coming on board, I think that, you know, some, a lot of the things that we're talking about right now, I think are the specific actionable, the, the objectives, right, that this new person is gonna kind of build in and I'm excited to work with the new.
And, and given this specificity of what you've just articulated, we can measure progress, right, so those specific things, I think, go to the sustainability person and then you start to evaluate how well they're doing moving us toward that.
Okay.
So we're gonna keep going, anything else? So we're going to keep going. Anything else on energy, water conservation, sustainability?
Uh, just that, you know, there's been some talk about the fact that nobody, I mean, you've got the new ponds coalition with Kim Colmark there. And he's highlighted the fact that nobody's really taking responsibility for our ponds. We've got the Water Quality Management Committee that's doing a good job of making sure the estuaries have a plan to be cleaned up. But our ponds are really falling into disrepair quickly with cyanobacteria, algae mats and, you know, this.
Vegetation.
Vegetation. They're all over vegetated to the point where the fish aren't even going to be able to survive because they're so choked out. So I really think that we need to get an initiative for freshwater ponds, whether it's a committee or town staff or somebody, we, we need to take responsibility for cleaning up our ponds.
Let me ask you a question, if I may.
Yes, and I'm, I'm going to cut you off quickly because we need to keep moving.
Please do.
I saw that.
At, at, at a certain point, because of the ponds and the over vegetation, would it be appropriate, Doug, to come up with a plan to own our own, you know, the vegetator that goes into the ponds and does the, most of the expenses logistics on that and trying to get a time for them to come in. If we owned our own, would that, would that, and I know you're deep into this.
Might be good.
Eventually.
Brewster invested in one.
Right.
They let us borrow it for the, where they were willing to let us borrow it for the Mill Pond.
Yeah.
We chose to just actually rent one because of the liability of borrowing somebody's expensive equipment. Maybe someday we would buy one, but right now, I think we would do a couple more pilot programs and, and just rent them just to get a better understanding of how that works, because it wasn't really successful at Mill Pond.
We have a huge part.
I'm going to move, I'm going to move us along, but I am going to say there are pictures of you doing that at Mill Pond. It has been photographed.
One more thing.
Yes.
Before we move on, you know, given the, you know, the issue that, you know, that we were addressing with the wind farm and, and all of that, you know, do, would we want to kind of put some kind of a goal in there to, you know, acknowledge that it's still, you know, something that, that the town is interested in and exploring as we are doing. But, but I don't, I don't see anything in, in, in the plan specifically. And I think, I think it would be a good, a good message, you know, that, that at least the board is, is considering it and to do it.
Alternative energy.
You know, to do it in a, you know, in a, in a reasoned, efficient, smart way, but at least put something in there, you know.
We did talk about renewable energy.
That's exactly.
Yeah, I mean, I think maybe a little.
And I think we can keep it as renewable energy, but again, I would think a sustainability person would be looking more closely at renewable energy in terms of specific renewable energy ideas. For I, I'm trying to keep this at the 30,000-foot view because I think that's where the select board needs to be. I don't think we get into the, the specifics. However, however, your specifics need to be somewhere. And so I think that's really, really important.
Agreed.
We still have to stay connected, Nancy, because we do have a constituency that calls us constantly on these issues.
Absolutely.
There can't be a disconnect between.
Ab, I agree.
Between the 30,000-foot view and how we interact with our new sustainability coordinator. So that's the venue I think we should be pushing on. How do we approach our constituencies' concerns? And concerns we already know, how do we get that to, you know, what's the appropriate, do we run everything through this office or whatever? I think that's the bigger.
Right, but.
How do we translate that?
If we, exactly, that's the issue. How do you translate it? Not, not what's here, because this is the 30,000-foot view, but we are hiring somebody to address just that. And so the translation is you have the person who's responsible for doing it, who is held accountable by the town manager. And then the town manager reports back to the select board. That's how I see it. Maybe I'm.
And then identification is what we're talking about here, how we do that.
Exactly.
I don't think we need to add a specific item to say we're willing to, to work with wind developers. I think.
I agree.
That's a management thing that we're going to do.
I agree.
Anyway, but to throw up a flag and say it's a strategic plan.
In our plan.
To work with people that might come to town. We're going to work with whoever comes to town.
I agree.
And, and, and that's that broader policy goal that the boards, that's, that's the purview. The board selects the policy goal. When we hire the sustainability coordinator, looking at all sort, all, all elements of renewable energy, the wind, solar, and that would be the actionable, objective, actionable goal that I'm going to ask this new, we're going to ask this new position to kind of create those, again, those metrics, right? How, how we're going to do, how we're going to achieve that goal, the select board's goal of, you know, focusing on public and private partnerships for renewable energy.
Maybe we could say including wind, solar, maybe just, just put it in parentheses.
I understand.
You know, that, that.
Could I just ask one more, one more question about the sustainability director, if I could? Have you identified what kind of support system is going to be in place for this person? Because if they just come in and work alone, they're going to be overwhelmed because we've already asked so many things of this person. Is there going to be existing staff that will supplement their action?
So we haven't, so we've talked about, right now we're talking about office space and where that's, how that's going to occur. Peter, did you have any additional comments on the interaction?
Great, great question, Doug, because just in, you know, 10 minutes, I think we've assigned about five people's worth of work.
27,000.
Hopefully none of the candidates are watching.
I suspect they may be. So the, you know, the position is going to be reporting to me and it is by design a highly collaborative position. So I, you know, I think what's critical is that, that the town manager, and it's just these issues that we're talking about. So the town manager and I are here and we're hearing all, you know, we're getting your 30,000-foot input and some, you know, some, a little bit more specifics about some things that you'd like to do. Now it's incumbent on us to work with this sustainability coordinator and, and have a dialogue. It's not all going to be top-down because the sustainability coordinator may have better knowledge and insights than we do about, okay, actually, this is really actionable. We can do something on this. This one, you know, here are the resources I need. This one, you know, may be a lower priority because it's going to be really difficult to achieve. So it's going to be a dialogue.
And we're getting more into the weeds too.
Yeah.
So we need, I want to say.
We'll need to dialogue. It's, that's kind of the, my overall point is we're going to need to communicate and have a dialogue so that you're hearing from us, okay, this is what the sustainability coordinator is and is not doing so that we don't have a misalignment of expectation.
And I just want to make sure that the specifics that have been brought up by select board members are recorded somewhere so that, so that we don't lose your input and what you think we need to do.
Okay.
So even though I'm fighting to stay at the 30,000-foot view, I want to make sure that those ideas and those suggestions that are really good, measurable, attainable, we can evaluate them, are recorded. Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to financial and economic stability. Any questions, suggested modifications?
I'd like to take out the COVID language. I think COVID's behind us now.
I just want to say overall, I think we've done really well.
I do too.
New director of finance, working on a lot of these things, bringing us a lot of information that we didn't have before that at least maybe wasn't as clear before. I think we've done really well in this.
I agree and.
So is there, my only question would be, COVID money has been dispersed, correct? We don't have to think about that anymore?
Correct.
Okay, so then I, I would agree that we could take the COVID language out. Anything else on financial, economic?
We may want to mention our efforts with respect to water rates and, 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 and the, the good job that Ed and his staff has done with respect to, you know, where we are with, with, with water rates. And I mean, that's something that I think we should.
Maybe just continue, maybe now we've determined that an enterprise fund might be.
Yeah, and.
Accurate for the water department. Should that be mentioned in here that?
Do you want to put that in the strategic plan?
That's a goal. I mean, that is a policy goal.
It could be a goal, yeah.
I think it's in there somewhere. It may not be under the financial, but I know I read something about an enterprise fund for, for water.
This is the one. This is the one area that, the one department, and Ed and I, and Peter and I had discussions. I think finance needs to be more engaged with this plan because Ed's been, and his staff have been doing great things over the past several months. But they weren't really prepared to like report back out on it. That's why it's a little skinny, the, the update, so.
We're just throwing out the ideas today. You're going to craft it and we'll come back. And if Ed wants to have input, we can review that in the.
But I think it's a broad goal, that's creation of the enterprise fund.
And let's, let's keep in mind, and the reason I'm pushing this is because there's a whole nother part to this discussion. We're, we're going through the plan, but then I would like our town manager to talk about how he's going to pull all these threads together from the department. So I want to make sure that I give him plenty of time.
Okay.
So I agree, we'll take out the COVID language unless anyone disagrees with that. Anything else on financial and economic stability?
Maybe that, you know, the discussion on tax liens and, you know, and we had that whole discussion to the planning, to the select board about the efforts to, you know, look, look into, you know, ways to make that more efficient.
Town manager might add that language after more discussion with Ed later on.
I would agree. I would agree, and that may become a goal or something that, that works with that department. Okay, we're going to move on to health and public safety. And I know we started this discussion around public safety and I think we all agreed regarding adding the police station to this plan and some real specifics around that, that, that Mike will move forward that don't necessarily have to be in the plan. But anything else?
I have one action item I'd like to consider, and that would be to add a ambulance bay to the West Falmouth Fire Station. And I know a lot of people have criticized that site as being too small, but I just don't really agree. I think that there is room for an ambulance bay. And when I look at the map, I still think that that station is in a pretty good location and it's pretty livable. I mean, we've put a lot of money into that little building, you know, lowering the concrete floor, the new HVAC system. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of good about that little building. And I think if we, I wouldn't want to take down the tree, but there's a big tree next to the building. If that tree was gone, you could put another bay there.
And I would like to take out, I mean, we have the completed goals within the strategic priority. I guess we can keep them because they're completed goals, but I would like to use some of that language around the new police station. And what is the board's feeling about that work on the fire station? Because that would be another goal in the public safety.
I think we'd all have to agree on that if it's going to be added. I don't, does anybody?
Can we just say something about explore the idea? Because I assume there's going to need to be like feasibility or something.
Yes.
Yes.
Be able to explore in the idea.
Okay.
Well, did we look at some of that before?
Yeah, I don't think we've taken, you know, a hard look at it. It's certain that the idea's been thrown around. And the, you know, the site is, is very small, but, you know, I think Doug is correct. I, I think depending on what your assumptions are about removing trees and what have you, I shouldn't say it's not just sort of little trees. There's one really big tree, right?
It's a huge, beautiful tree.
Right.
And I'd hate to lose it, but.
I, I agree with Doug too, and, and, you know, just throwing an idea around doesn't answer the questions or the reasoning for the public either that live there. And we hear that from them quite a bit. Not, not as much lately. But that's a question that reoccurs constantly and Doug, Doug, I commend you for bringing that part of it up because that's what they're looking for.
I mean, we're almost there, but this is the reason why we have very low response rate in West Falmouth, because we don't have an ambulance. Fire trucks can't really respond effectively to medical incidents, which is the majority of our calls, especially in that area.
So I have as a new goal under health and public safety, exploring the addition of an ambulance bay at West Falmouth Station.
Thank you.
I, I also would just remind the board that the policy of this board was to commit to staffing six stations. And to my knowledge, we haven't changed that number, so.
Right.
I think it's, I think it's reasonable to add that in.
Thank you.
Anything else? Health and public safety. Going once, twice. Okay, we're going to move on to management of coastal natural resources and infrastructure.
I think the language is, oh, if I could jump, jump right in.
Go ahead.
The language in this is still valid and viable. What I'd like to do is kind of create a new big picture focus, and we don't have a coastal residency person yet. But I'd just like to throw out there that I think that we need to really think big about coastal residency. And when the coastal residency person that hopefully we can incorporate into our budget next year, when they come, I think we need to have a real prepared dream list. And I don't know if any of it's really practical, but I'm going to bring back the thing I mentioned before, a barrier reef from Nobbska to, almost to where Falmouth Harbor is, to create a, a breakwater to reduce that coastal effect. I'd like to know, so when the Coastal Residency Action Committee was reviewing with the Woods Hole Group to develop their plant, there was a lot of mention by the engineer and the advocates, the professionals, that there are a lot of coastal roads that are going to want to be elevated. But the committee didn't really think that was viable because they were thinking the natural process needs to be restored and the roads should go away. So I think we need to iron out politically whether or not we want to consider elevating our roads because it's, right now it's not currently recommended. So I think we need to think about the big picture of what it is we really want politically in this town. Do we want to invest some money to elevate some roads? Do we want to consider a barrier reef? So I think that, I don't suggest really changing a lot of this language, but just the perception of how we view it rather than small projects like raising a, a lift station or elevating a building here and there. I think we need to think of the bigger, broader picture so that when we do hire a coastal residency person, they know what they're up against.
And I think we need to be careful of when we do hire. I think it's an if. I don't, I don't know that we are in a position right now to say we are absolutely 100% going to hire. I mean, I think it's an idea that the board may support, but I want to be really careful about language and not committing to another position just yet.
And I also, if I could go further. Is I'd like to say that in strategically thinking about this, that if we do hire a coastal residency person, it should be part of the DPW building staff and work closely with DPW. I don't think we should go back to the committee-guided approach to coastal residency. I think it's a professional management assignment that needs to be incorporated into staff operations.
I think how we do that would be, I think it's a great suggestion. I think it would be left to the town manager.
Yeah.
But I, but I agree with you in terms of the committee. Anything else? Oh, go ahead. And then I'll go to you, Mr., Mr. Muscally.
So a real quick clarification, Select Board Member Brown mentioned the pond maintenance and those type of efforts going forward. Would that, it's a question, would that not be more appropriate under the natural resource, this key priority area versus the energy and water conservation?
Yeah, I guess it would.
Just want to plug that in.
That's a good point.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a note to add that, potentially add that as a new goal.
Move it. Good point. Mr. Muscally, go ahead.
So, thank you. So Select Member Brown mentioned the, the good work of the volunteer committee that had, had done the, you know, all that work on climate action. And, you know, if I'm correct, I think the only neighborhood that has actually been assessed in, you know, against that plan was the Surf Drive neighborhood, and I think we should be looking at, you know, assessing other areas in the town where they, where they fit in with the, with the recommendations that, that the group made.
Yeah, and, and the other thing I was going to say is, I'd like to see us continue efforts towards coastal residency and implementing. They identified a lot of action steps that were very viable, like zoning, a planning initiatives and long-range thinking. A lot of that work is really yet to be done, so I, I don't want to just stop and say someday we'll get a coastal residency person and then we'll start. I'd like to be able to take some action on what was already recommended by that committee. But I'd like it to be staff-driven rather than committee-driven, because I found that, and it happens a lot with committees, that leadership, you know, the interface between committee members sometimes can make things bog down. And when you have professional staff, you have leadership at the top, things get done, I think, more effectively. And I think this is a, a subject that's going to really need effective leadership management rather than committee discussion.
Then just one other thing to follow up, you know, on the, on the issue of roadways. You know, the Cape Cod Commission has this low-lying roads project. And I think that certainly the town should be working with the commission to, you know, to see where we might be able to get some assistance to, to, to help those low-lying roads.
We almost missed our chance to be in that, and I got the notification and I asked Mr. Suso to please consider it, and they gave us another chance because we had missed the initial application time. And, you know, we were actually the poster child for low-lying roads program, because we have so many. They used us as the example at the meeting.
Okay. Anything else? Management of coastal natural resources and infrastructure. Okay, we're going to move on to organizational effectiveness and community engagement.
Cookout of goodwill.
Mr. Muscally.
Just, just one, one, one comment. I'm not familiar with all of the history, if you will, of the Transportation Management Committee and, and where it stands and, and so forth. But I do think that there is a need for a committee such as the Transportation Committee to, to, to be up and running again and helping the, the town make some, some recommendations. Just, transportation is a huge issue townwide, and I think we should try to reinvigorate that committee to, you know, to help the town move forward with these issues.
I, okay, and I think we would send that over to the town manager. I'm not sure it needs to be in our strategic plan.
But just, just a comment.
Yep.
You know, it's, and number one right there is support volunteer board.
Yep, absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have a comment on, a comment on this, um, suggestion. So one of the things I've observed, we talked about the police station and, uh, and the poor conditions that building has found itself in. I'd like to have in, in this category, because I think it's a measure of organizational effectiveness, how effective we are, management is, working with the governing body to maintain the facilities, right? It's, it's an asset, right, our buildings? And, uh, so what I'd, what I'd like to suggest is adding a goal under organizational effectiveness to conduct a facilities condition evaluation in FY '25 that would include cost estimates. We'll scope this out, but it would include cost estimates to get those buildings up to where they need to be, up to standard. Um, what, you know, repair replacement, the RIR, I call it. Um, so a, 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 a study looking at the condition, evaluating the condition of town-owned buildings, facilities. And then connecting that, the results of that study, to the 10-year capital improvement plan. I don't want to be in a position where we're letting these buildings kind of.
Play catch-up.
Right. We, we need to be more proactive than reactive, and we're gonna be reactive with the PD station, because we have to be, and get that where it needs to be in the interim before perhaps build a new station. But just so that we're more proactive looking at this and then programming funds every year to address the, the higher priority needs. So ultimately, we're at a, a point where we're kind of, we're at equilibrium. The buildings are in good or better condition. And we can measure that. We literally can. Um, everybody's heard of the pavement condition index that DPW has put together, kind of measuring the condition of the roads. I think we can do the same model with our buildings so that going forward, we're in a, in a boom.
Then you would prioritize which buildings need to come first?
Right, and that's that capital budgeting process.
I like it. I, I would agree with that.
We're talking about a five-year plan here, but if we were talking about a 10- or 15-year plan, I think we should start talking about relocating this building as well to another location outside of Main Street, a little more accessible, less vulnerability to the coastal zone. Just a really long-range plan.
In the immediate, Doug, I mean, everybody has to agree that this building needs some love too. This building has got some issues.
But I just don't want to go too far with spending many more millions here, which we could easily do. So I just want to throw that out there for the longer horizon.
And it's not a new idea, right? It's another idea that kind of.
It just doesn't fit into the five-year plan right now.
Right. Okay, anything else? Organizational effectiveness and community engagement.
Did we agree that Doug's suggestion about the community policing would go into this section as an idea for the police department potentially?
That was the suggestion, Mr. Renshaw.
Have you an assigned officer to, to work with vil-, the, the various villages?
Yeah, even if it's just a goal for now, when staffing allows or whatever.
I'd, I'd, I'd recommend. It's, it's, it's gonna be easier, I think, departmentally to kind of track these and monitor if it's within that community engagement piece.
And that was part of Chief, Chief Laurie's presentation too, that he was gonna do that, go out into the community and, and identify those, those.
Very much.
Yeah, I just wanted us to be on record as supporting, you know, if it's a financial consideration later, I want to be supportive of it.
I just want to make sure that was the section we agreed it would go into.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Muscally?
Thank you. I was gonna bring it up later, but I'll, I'll bring it up now in, in this context. And, and I don't know what control we have over that, but I would like to see the wastewater management committee possibly meet somehow differently so that it doesn't bump up against the select board meetings that, that, that we have on alternate Mondays. It seems that, uh, you know, some of the meetings kind of, uh, butt up against each other. And, uh, you know, I for one would like to have the ability to see some of those meetings, watch, watch them. So I don't know if there's a suggestion as to.
I think we would give that to the town manager and have him speak to the chair.
To make the point, because I think it would help community engagement if people didn't have to, you know, and, and there may be some other committees, I don't know, that, you know, people would have to choose where to go and if they wanted to go to both meetings. So just a, just a thought.
Well, and I think, yeah, I think that's a great idea, and I would, I would also think that they had to choose that Monday night for a reason.
Well, maybe that reason no longer exists, Madam Chair.
No, that was only one person. He's more flexible than most.
I wonder if, under this section, we might add, um, consider additional funding to supplement additional television coverage of meetings? Because it's great when they're televised. If you happen to have a conflict, you can go back and watch it later. And, you know, FCTV has limited resources and, but if we had more dedicated funding to provide for coverage, then maybe we could get people that could get paid a few dollars instead of relying on volunteers. And we could expand the FCT's TV services, you know, and help their mission.
It certainly fits under community engagement.
Right.
You want community engagement, you have to make it easy.
Yeah.
So, again, it would be considered, yeah. Um, okay. I'm gonna move on.
Yep.
Water, wastewater, solid waste management.
IA systems around ponds, make that a project, make that a, somehow study what it would take to get, you know, phosphorus-removing technology, urine-diverting toilets, or whatever is the most cost-effective and efficient. Because we really need to start paying attention to the, the ponds, and that's another. It might be a duplication of, of goals, but I think it's so important that we need to, we need to put it somewhere and start to prioritize it.
And then I would keep it, I would keep it broad.
Yeah.
And the town manager would take it and make it specific. Yes?
It's actually in that ongoing goals there, the, the last bullet point is the enterprise account for, uh, the water system. There, there it is.
Yep. Anything else on water, wastewater, solid management? Solid management, solid waste?
We need what? We want solid.
Okay, so at this point, I would like to, um, ask Mr. Renshaw to talk about sort of his planning process, discussion, review, plan, updates, and what that's gonna look like moving forward.
All right, fantastic. So, uh, so I've kind of alluded to some of this already. Um, my goal over the next, working with Peter over the next two or three months, is to really start immersing and plugging the departments in to this plan. When we distributed the plan across all the departments, I got the sense that, um, that they weren't too familiar with the plan itself. They're gonna get familiar with it. I mean, we're gonna work with the departments at that, at the department level, division level. Creates, um, again, those very measurable, very specific objectives, metrics, um, that match up, tie into your goals, right, the policy goals. So you've got select board policy goals, and then I'm gonna be working with the department heads to create these, the, uh, the actual metrics and the objectives, the mileposts, right? So that we're at the end of the year where we, we are at where we need to be. The dilemma that I was faced over the past probably 10 days is I was kind of compiling, and I apologize because the, the product that you have as far as the updates, um, the departments did a great job. I probably could have been more specific about what I was asking the format. I wanted the information back in. But again, um, what I'm, what we're lacking right now is a management tool, and I think this is an important next step. We can have all of the measurable metrics and measures tying neatly and completely with the board's goals, but if we don't have a way to kind of seamlessly put it all together and then automate that as much as we can. You've heard me else, you've heard me say before, what gets measured gets done, and I, I believe that to be true. And I think over the past seven months or so, um, even though there's been some progress, I think we could have be making, we could have been making more progress on, on these seven key priority areas if we had had a system in place that allowed us to kind of track that and measure it, and then report to you all. Um, and I, I'd suggest going forward, um, and again, over the next two to three months, Peter and I, and this is a, this is a lift, getting, getting, um, multiple objectives up underneath each one of the board's goals, listing those. And I'm gonna be pushing in November Town Meeting for a bit of technology that's gonna allow us, I think, to kind of tie this together in a package and present it neatly to the board every quarter. So, and then post it on the website so that everybody can see, the community can see, uh, kind of what the efforts, what the efforts have been. Um, and again, if we do this on a quarterly basis, departments are feeding information into the system that I'm gonna show you real quickly. I've gotta pull up my web, a website that, in a platform, um, a piece of software that's cloud-based. I'd recommend that. Um, that Peter and I just sat through a webinar yesterday, a demo, kind of how this could tie into. And I think you've got a screenshot. I asked for a screenshot in your packet. It kind of talks. This particular vendor, um, has created a platform that I think would really work well. I'm gonna use another coastal community, uh, which I'm sure most of you are probably familiar with, uh, the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida. And I'm just gonna go up here and kind of click through this, and it kind of, it will make more sense. So, so here they have six, um, key result area, key prior, strategic priorities the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida has created. Envision, just putting our seven into that kind of same format. So we would have a dedicated page on the website that would basically house all of this, all of this information, all of that stuff that it gave you in 50 pages of departmental input. That would be done basically into this system. So the department heads, um, and Peter and I would be managing it, would, would receive routine emails. Hey, it's time to update your, uh, your, your metrics, your measures. They would go into the system. And I'm just gonna walk through this, and, uh, we'll take infrastructure for an example. And again, those actionable goals, how they're listed now, or what I've been referring to as objectives up underneath each. This literally gives you an idea of how the information could be presented. Now, the one thing about this particular vendor, and it's ClearPoint Strategies, there's, there's several, and Peter and I are gonna continue our evaluation. This may not be the one that we end up, land on, but this is one that I think neatly and pretty concisely kind of shows the information. So as you're looking at this, and again, um, they're looking at goal one, theirs is to build a sustainable and resilient community. Pretty, pretty, you know, tied directly to what we're talking, we've been talking about as one of ours. They've identified, identified these actionable steps or goals, how we're gonna get to that ultimate goal of building a sustainable and resilient community. What I propose to do is take what we've just been, uh, talking about this morning, putting it into a platform like this and allowing us to kind of track and present. And this, uh, they call it a dashboard, scorecard, it's referred to in different ways. But what I like about this system is that it shows literally just a visual cue. If you're green, you're, you're progressing while you're on track, um, whenever that target that you set. A lot, and that's why I talked earlier about the importance of being very specific and measurable, these, these objectives, because you have to have some parameters. By this point, by December 31st, we hope to add, um, 20 new affordable housing attainable, affordable housing units. And again, looking at that, by, as you break that out quarterly, we're looking at doing five. That's maybe not the best example, but you literally have to get down into that level of detail to make it measurable. So that we can, Peter and I, working with the department heads, we can make sure that we're on track. And if we're not, every quarter, every three months, we present this information, select board basically, um, working through Peter and I, identify how we can maybe reallocate resources and put a, put a, a higher priority, more emphasis on that particular area if we're falling behind. And for example, if you look at, uh, this particular area, and again, the visual cue, the red, right? That's, that's kind of the sign that, you know, you, you've got some issues.
Need more trees.
You need more trees, in this particular case. But again, I'm looking for, and I think this is a really important next step. And, uh, in, in terms of having the technology, I, I spent hours trying to take the department input that you all have this morning and put that into a spreadsheet. The problem with spreadsheets is that they're cumbersome, um, and, uh, and I consider myself pretty good with Excel, but it's hard to kind of, if you have to manually enter this information into a spreadsheet, it's better if you can kind of delegate that, uh, responsibility across all of the departments and have a representative with the department responsible for going into the system. They would log on. Um, we get a dedicated number of users that could have access to the system, and they are responsible and held accountable for going into the system and adding the information versus Peter and I having to go in manually and kind of add across all seven, uh, key strategic priority areas and all of those different goals and whatnot.
Could I ask a question?
Mr. Brown?
Sure. Do you envision this just being an in-house tool for staff, or is this something that's public access?
So this, great question. So this is the tool, this is the, uh, public-facing side of the tool. Um, the, uh, the interface with the staff, there's a lot more, there's a lot more boxes and fields. Um, because basically you're, you're able to set kind of parameters as what you're tracking and how you're reporting on it. Uh, but there's a public-facing portion of this that you're seeing right now, obviously. And we can change, they have Gantt charts, they have bar, bar charts, um, tables, graphs, pie charts. We can basically display and illustrate the data to the public any way we want. Um, the, this particular vendor and most of the others that I've worked with in the past allow you to kind of tailor-make the display of the presentation. Um, and I call, I call that the dashboard, the public-facing kind of view of how we're doing on a, on a, on a regular basis.
Mr. Zininski, do you have a question?
May I? Uh, will this also help you measure, uh, department participation to it? It, without having to run two miles to find out who's doing what and how effective they are?
And that, yeah, it will. So that's the, that's the seamless kind of automated part of the process versus what Peter and I just kind of went through over the past couple, three weeks.
Right.
So, yeah, this process allows, puts the onus, the responsibility onto the departments, the representative in the department, division, um, to have, that has access to basically go into the system and upload the data. What I love about systems like this, and everyone that I've ever used works similar, they, uh, they, they send cues to the staff that are assigned to a particular goal that, hey, it's time for you, and it's by email, it's time for you to go into the system and update your information. So there is no excuse for forgetting it. Um, there is no, it, it, it reminds people that it's time to go in, and, and management, uh, reminds us as well. So, uh, so, yeah, I think this would make the system a lot more seamless, and I think is really needed, um, as we go forward. And the great part of this is that, you know, we're talking today about the strategic plan, and that's important. This platform, this piece of software, like most of the others, um, also allow you to, uh, track capital improvement, capital projects. But I, we had that discussion about being more accountable and being more proactive and measuring the progress of these larger capital projects. And then we're not at the end of the, what we thought was gonna be the end of, of the project, and we're, we're, we're halfway through. So this system with some, some adjustments and some modifications could also be used to measure our progress on capital projects. So I like to say it kills two birds with one stone. It allows us, gives us the flexibility to use this tool in different ways. Strategic plan and the capital improvement plan.
I have one other question. Uh, it seems like this would not really increase workload, just a different way of doing the same work, right?
It would. And, and it certainly, and I think the department heads and the division folks would agree, um, it would certainly be easier this way than the exercise I just put them through over the past couple, three weeks, having to come, come up. And, and you can see, and they did a great job, but, you know, getting the, there's not a real huge consistency, and part of that's on me. I probably should have had a template form that they typed into, but at any rate, this would provide the consistency. And to your point, it would be a lot easier for them to go into the system. Everybody would, the user would have a login. They just log into the system, add their information, click submit, and it's done, and they're done with it.
Everybody's hitting the ball with the same bat.
We're not keeping 20 different spreadsheets and trying to consolidate all of that information into a master spreadsheet, what I tried to do over the past couple of days. So, so this system, I think, takes us to that next step.
Do we need to vote to allocate funds to implement it?
So, so what I'm gonna, I'm gonna work with Peter. Uh, this is one of the November Town Meeting, uh, efforts that I think is gonna be kind of worthwhile for, for us to bring to, to Town Meeting in November. Again, you've heard me talk about being a proponent of technology. There's gonna be other things too. Financial management systems, and that could be a, a separate goal itself within that financial, uh, section. But, uh, so I think this is a Town Meeting article that will be.
I just want to make sure that when red appears and we're not meeting it, we have such good department heads that there are reasons why things can't happen. There may be reason, very legitimate reasons why we didn't get 20 units in a, in that quarter or whatever. So I just want to make sure that you don't see the red, and it's, and people don't see the red and go, well, you're not doing your job because you didn't get the. So I just want to be really careful about that, and I want to make sure that, um, there are places for some sort of, I don't know, explanation or something. Because that is going to happen. They're not gonna be able to do it perfectly every time.
Just like the, oh, go ahead.
That'll cert, thanks. That'll certainly prompt the conversation though, rather than let it drag out a little bit before, and make it more advantageous to deal with it then.
Exactly.
You know, I mean, without, you know, you see red, you think you're in trouble. That doesn't necessarily have to be the approach to this. It just reminds you that you have to have that conversation is the way I'm looking at this, right?
Yeah, and it doesn't necessarily reflect badly on department heads, because some of it is our own doing, like not funding IT for years now.
But that's.
How long's it gonna take them to fix?
You're exactly right. That statement should be there. It was not funded, or something like that. Only because you put this out publicly, the first thing I'd do is look at that red if I, if I didn't know the inner workings and go, what is going on?
Yeah, like the water replacement project, that's gonna be in the red.
Right.
But it's not anybody's fault, uh, other than our own for not addressing it.
And it may force that conversation prior to it turning red. I can't do this, I can't do this because of this.
Right.
Because they don't want to go to red.
But at least we'll see it.
There's yellow, and there's, there's.
That's exactly right.
There's a yellow marking as well, which makes you, you know, take a look at it before you have to get the red.
I like this.
Right, you know it was progress.
Yes.
It may not be perfect, but it's progress. It may not be perfect, but it's progress.
Absolutely.
So exactly what we're talking about right now, and, and we can certainly add notes to this, I mean, again, it's, it's, it's pretty customizable, these systems, and again, if it's not this vendor, the others. But exactly the conversation we're having now is the importance of having this quarterly. We can do it at any period that the select board wants, but quarterly is what I'm most used to. So every three months, it's on the calendar to bring a select board meeting where we go through this information, and, and that's where the departments present. And if there's an issue or concern, if it's a permitting issue, Army Corps, whoever is might maybe slowing the project down, that's, that's our staff's opportunity to kind of explain that to the board.
Comments, like a comment.
Helps us know where we have to work, right?
So the routine-ness in, in, of those kind of discussions, right, as far as the, you know, checking the temperature or the pulse, kind of where we're at across the board with all seven of the strategic priority areas, or capital improvement plan projects, the frequency of having those discussions, that's, that's the important, that's the whole key to this thing working, so that we keep on track.
That makes this a live document, and it makes it real.
It does, it does. And that's, I think, one of the concerns I have, and, and again, great plan, I was excited to know that you spent as much time as you did, and it's, it's a solid plan, but if it just sits on a shelf, and I'm not suggesting it did, because obviously it didn't, I mean, staff have been working, but I think we need to kind of engrain the importance of keeping, you know, all of these things updated, and it's a, it's a continual work in progress. It's not something that at the end of the month, it's time to get wrench out our stats, but they're continually getting into the system and updating the information.
We, we would be able to access it in real time throughout. We wouldn't have to necessarily wait
Right.
for the, for the quarterly report from you. We could go in ourselves and say, see where we are. I compliment you, I mean, you know, you and Peter, it's a wonderful job. I mean, I looked at it, you know, briefly last night, and again, this morning with what you were able to put out, and, you know, I know within a short period of time, you know, you, you did a great job.
Well, thank you. So what you have in your packets is what I call a MACHA, and literally, Peter and I gave this particular vendor a copy of our plan, and they just kind of took the information and loaded it into the system, and that's what we used for the demo yesterday. This is actual, a live site, obviously for Fort Lauderdale. And they have, I forget the number.
I like their, the way they've identified, there's stuff to keep track of too, infrastructure, public places. We might consider, you know, our priority list might be modified with some of these ideas as well.
And, and you can, you can set these up, I mean, again, totally customizable, you can set them up, you can, you can have, you know, narrative that describes, kind of like the strategic plan does, the importance, what it is we're, we're measuring and why it's important to us. So you can, you can tailor make this. Again, next step, very important step, I think.
I like the fact that it aligns the departments immediately on, on one program. So everybody's pulling on the same end of the rope from the beginning. So all the learning curve will happen, you know, equally.
So the, so having the platform, you know, procuring the platform is important, we'll try to take care of that in November. That'll give Peter and I the next few months to kind of work with the departments to create those objectives, right, the object, actionable goals. Because one of the great things about having a cloud-based service like this is that they build it out, we just have to have the, the, kind of the outline, and then they load it into the system.
Is there any added security to this program that we're going to have to get as well?
I don't believe so. We'll check on that, just to make sure, and we'll, we'll work with IT to make sure it's all compatible, and, and, you know, the interface, the public facing kind of part of it. But that's all I had, again.
Any questions or any additional questions or comments? I think it's awesome.
I would say it's a weird idea.
Well, I don't really like it. Okay. Review plan updates, anything else that we need to go through on this strategic plan? Any questions about what the department heads sent?
I have not had a chance to read through all of them, unfortunately.
I'd be interested to hear if there's any kind of updates on anything that's in the strategic plan that we might, that might have been, I know our last year or two hasn't been very productive, and that's, you know,
I think it has.
unfortunate, but I'm just curious if there's.
I would take exception to that.
All right?
I thought he was your guy. Well, I'm just saying, I've been telling everyone to be patient, because we've been so short-staffed, and, you know, I, I don't know what has been able to be accomplished, but I'd be impressed if anything was, you know, during what we've been just gone through.
Wow, Peter.
I'm seriously, that's not, that's not critical, that's not critical at all.
I think we're in a good place, and I think building on, on, on what you've done, you know, with, with the strategic plan and the updates, I think will put us on the right path going, going forward.
Yeah, this is just a way to report out on it and, and make it available to the public where we're at. I mean, the past year, there has been, and if you look through the, the, the updates the department submitted, you can, I didn't, I should, that, that's the next step, but we could have checked those off, because there has been quite a bit accomplished. If you look at the town manager's office, updates.
And the housing, I mean, and the update on, the update on all that.
Kim did a great job.
That the housing and Kim has been doing is, you know, I think in general, you knew a lot was going on, but we didn't really know the specifics, or I didn't, you know, now we do, and that's good to know.
And that speaks exactly to what Doug just asked. We, we haven't really been updated on progress.
Right, so it's good to see.
It's.
And there are a lot of executive session items that aren't public knowledge, that have been worked on throughout the year, that have been, taken a lot of time as well and been successfully handled.
And in, in all seriousness, yes, obviously, you know, with the transition in the town manager's office, that has reduced our capacity on some of the higher level issues, no question. My response was more along the lines of, you've got a full department staff, and they've been going 100 miles an hour.
Yeah.
So just because there's, you know, there is a transition at the top, that didn't slow down DPW, it didn't slow down human services, seniors, you know, across the board. That was the only point I wanted to make.
I'm thinking more in terms of, I personally paused on asking for initiatives.
More stuff.
You know, because I can be a little demanding, so I consciously backed off.
At least you're nice about it.
Could you please do everything right now?
I think this is really productive.
I do too, and I, I just, I love these updates. It may not be exactly what you wanted, or how, but this is more than we've had, right? And this, this to me, gives me hope that people are paying attention to the strategic plan, that they don't think it's just something that sits on a shelf, that it is really important to the board, and that we've set some priorities and we want to see them moved.
There's no reason for them not to pay attention to the strategic plan now, because it's going to be something that they can, they're going to be part of.
And I guess the other thing is, I'll leave it to you folks to update completed goals.
Yeah, well, I guess that's my question. I mean, what's the next step? Are we going to be given a new strategic plan that we will formally adopt, that will incorporate some of these changes, or does, do we, do we stay with the one, you know, that's dated October 2022? Are we going to have a new one?
I'm hoping that some of the, that we will get a draft with some of the changes.
That's what I mean. I mean, is that, is that the goal for this discussion?
Yeah, I mean, they're very small.
Yeah, not, there's not much, but taking out the COVID stuff and things like that.
I'm not saying they're insignificant. What I'm saying is that we should get a draft, we will vote it again, but this, this isn't even a year old.
Right.
So I wasn't expecting complete changes. And I think it's really important that we do keep, we don't just rewrite it once a year, and that's, that's been the practice. We're going to do it, we're going to look at it quarterly because we're going to be getting updates on what we need.
Now we have the system to be able to do that.
Exactly, and then once a year, we may overhaul it.
Yeah.
See what happens when I sit next to Doug at a meeting. I'm going to dovetail on what Doug asked a little while ago, and it kind of went away. Is there immediate funding that you guys would be looking for, that we could provide to institute this part earlier? To help you with town meeting, you, you know what I'm saying? Is there a way to do that, and what, how much is it? Or would that circumvent what you're trying to do? Because this right here looks like the sooner this could happen, the better it, everybody would be served.
So.
Sorry, right?
Well, we could probably identify some funds, and I'll, you know, throw around numbers out, 15 to 20,000 for some of the platforms that we've been looking at. It's not a large, I think there's a lot of benefit in, to that cost. The, the bigger issue, the bigger challenge is going to be
That's surprising, that's that little part.
About filling out the details, right, taking your policy goals, and then over the next few months, working with the staff to create those actionable objectives, right?
Would that help you with your presentation, your combined presentation at town meeting in November?
I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
I don't think it would be helpful.
Just, just a question.
As long as the select board is comfortable with the notion that Peter and I are going to be working, this is important, it's a priority of mine and Peter's, I think, to have this platform so that we can, and I'm not going to say it's going to be, you know, calendar year 24, but over the next few months, we're going to be building this thing. I don't think it's going to help, it would be a tremendous help if we have the platform, but we don't have the information to load into it. And that's, that's the step that's going to, and it's, it's not the disconnect, but it's the lack, the departments need to be more connected to the platform, and that's what we're going to be working on.
It's going to take a while, and you've got to do a little research on which system is going to be best.
We've only looked at one, honestly.
Okay, just.
Madam Chair, just one point of clarification. So it's, it's not a huge upfront cost, but it's annual, so it's not a $15,000 one-time cost, because, you know, the, it, it's a service, so it's an annual cost that we'll be looking at.
So would you be going to town meeting for that money?
Yes. Yeah, and then we would build it into the budget, you know, we haven't gotten into the details about how we fund the first 15,000, but ultimately, it's going to be part of the FY '25 and ongoing budget.
That helps answer my question, my immediate question.
That's why the cost seemed lower initially.
Right. Any other questions? I have, I just have one quick one that is not completely related to the strategic plan, but when I'm thinking about this, I started to think about, one of the pieces we, I'd like the town manager to look at is how we evaluate employees. I'd like to know a little bit more about that system, I'd like to know a little bit more about the tools that we have or don't have, and I'm not asking you to do it right now, but at some point, you know, it's, it's part of organizational effectiveness.
Build, build it into the, you know, into that, that, that policy that, that we have.
I was, I was thinking about putting it in there, and I thought, okay, I'm going to hold back on that, because I know he has so much, but I don't want it to, to slide away either. But I agree with you.
Yeah, I mean, maybe that's the place to, you know.
So Peter and I have, have had some discussions with Susan recently, Susan Lumping, our HR Director, and I don't, I don't want to seem too critical, I don't think we have a really strong annual appraisal evaluation instrument right now. So that's something that we're certainly looking to, to build. We're talking another perhaps town meeting project initiative will be a new HRMS, Human Resources Management System, again, to allow HR to do a better job with recruiting, the annual evaluations, that's an HR kind of housed traditional function. But the tool itself, the instrument, the document, I don't think we have a really strong, and I don't think historically, we've not been consistent with how we've even used that, not very strong evaluation instrument. Peter, myself, and Susan Lumping, the HR Director, are going to put something together. I've used things in my past that I think are pretty successful and, and useful. The big 30,000-foot view of what I'd like to take and use that instrument for, and some of the things we've talked about, it's important, you know, it doesn't matter, the punctuality and time, you know, arriving at time and, and using sick leave appropriately, all those kind of things that you sometimes see in like an annual evaluation that is important, but to me, what's more important is, are they following, are they connected and tied in the annual employment, performance reviews, are they tied into this? We can, we can literally put language in, in, in elements of the performance review that ties back into the strategic plan. Another thing I think, and that I'd like to speak with the board, that's why I was hoping we had, there's a whole other level of this where we need to, I think, is an organization talk about mission, a vision statement, and then core values, something that's really important, I think, is, is you, as you evaluate employees, making sure that they understand what the core values of the organization are, and that's a, that's a select board initiative, but I also want to involve the departments in creating those core values. So just literally last Thursday, we had a department head meeting, and I talked about over the next couple of months, I'm asking them to start meeting with their staff and in talking about core values at the department level, and then we're going to bring those back at one of the next upcoming department head meetings. And I want to have, I want to have something to present to select boards as a starting point. But again, if, if you'll bear with me, I'm going to pass something around that I've used in other organizations, and I think this is really effective, is part of the onboarding process, because all of this stuff is interconnected. Making sure that the employees are, feel connected to the whole, the organ, the, the organization, and that they're a part of it. So again, the, the foundation of all of that is, is having a really strong mission statement, vision statement, and a set of core values. So this card I'm passing around is something I have used in the last couple of organizations I've managed. I, I typically are, I have participated in the onboarding, they'll come in, meet with me, meet with Peter, kind of get, you know, is, is kind of the, the, the town manager, assistant town manager, and we'll give those cards out as part of the onboarding process. So it immediately gets the new employee connected to the whole, and it's not like I'm going to stop people in the hallway and ask them, you know, what's core value number three, but it, it allows them, again, to feel part of that, of part of the organization. And I don't want to sit around and create these in a vacuum, I think, and that's why I've asked the department heads last Thursday to kind of go out to their folks, the staff, and kind of start having those discussions about what, what, what do they value, right, as part of the order, integrity, honesty, accountability, I mean, those are some of the traditional, but in feline, it may be, it may be something different. So, so I think it's going to be really important going forward as we develop a, I think, a more effective annual performance review tool, to have that connected back to the strategic plan elements in some way, and, and certainly the, the, the core values, actually, I think that's important.
I just want to comment on one of them, and that is customer service.
Right.
Because that's what we are all supposed to be about, because we work for this town.
Certainly good to be proud of what you do for a living too. I mean, coming to a place where you're proud of it.
Can I ask a question about, how's it going with the remote work? Is that becoming a useful tool?
Slowly, it's coming slowly, which is, which was sort of the expectation. We do have a handful of employees who have, you know, gone through the process and completed a remote work agreement, and it's appreciated. We, we have started to incorporate it in some of our interview process, that, you know, that's a benefit that we can offer. So it, you know, there, we are taking advantage of it, but, you know, if you were to ask me what percent of our employees are working remotely, it's probably on the order of 1% or 2%.
And the reason I ask, I know my wife now has a job where she does kitchen design, and she has a laptop that she brings home, and she can log in if she wants to catch up on projects and get paid, you know, her extra time. I don't know if that's something that's incorporated into what we do. I'm just curious if that, that is how it works. So if somebody has a project that needs attention, they can go home and catch up on it and still get compensated?
So, you know, it depends on the employee, right? I mean, we have a lot of salaried staff who have long been working more than 40 hours, and they continue to do that, and part of the way they do that is with the laptop at home. But if it is an hourly employee, well, a couple of things, even with, with salaried employees, you know, what the remote work allows is, there are some who, you know, one or two days a week are working from home the entire day. So that's something that we hadn't had in the past, that we had started to introduce. And then if it's an hourly employee, you know, it, then we've, we are structuring a schedule, so they're not just sort of deciding on a whim to start working from home on a project, it's something that's planned in advance.
So I wonder then if in the future, you guys might consider that login feature where they can actually be compensated, you know, through a computer login, so that if they're willing to do some extra work at home, it can be, you know, quantified, and they can be compensated, rather than just doing extra work because they feel under pressure. So I'm hoping that's something that we might.
That's something we need to look at. We need to be obviously competitive, and, and I was thrilled to know that we have that remote policy, that remote work policy, because I think that's one piece of being competitive, because if you're not doing it and someone else is, that's, you're, you're Because if you're not doing it and someone else is, that's, you're losing the opportunity to recruit people and retain people. So a lot of folks are looking for that flexibility. I also would like to, at some point, look at alternate work schedules, that sort of thing, and how that might work. A lot of details would have to be worked out for a program like that, but I think that's another flexibility and kind of a, not an incentive, but an additional benefit having that alternate work schedule. I'm talking like a 4-10 schedule, something like that. You know, the balance is, and Peter and I and Susan will have to talk this through, is the, making sure that your equity, the equity piece of that, and making sure that, you know, all of the departments have an opportunity, and as you all know, four-day work weeks may not work well with all departments and divisions, so.
Services aren't interrupted by that kind of schedule.
I was just going to say, and that people still have access five days a week.
Uh-huh.
That's really important.
That'll be important kind of coordination piece in.
Any other questions or comments?
I think that this was really a good use of time. I'm glad that we did this, and I'm really impressed with the work that you all have done on thinking about how to organize this better, how to make it more accessible for the public and for us. So I'm excited about moving forward on the strategic plan and all the things that you presented.
Awesome. It was very.
I have a question for Mr. Renshaw. How's the board doing?
I was just going to say, you're out of questions, Mr. Brown. I almost used